At this time, this is our St. Lucie County School Board Special Meeting, February the 7th, 2022, regarding Superintendent Candidate. At this time, I'm asking everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to open it up by introducing the candidate for Superintendent, Dr. Jonathan R. Prince, Deputy Superintendent of St. Lucie County Public Schools. Due to the retirement of E. Wayne Gent on June the 30th, the Board has asked the Deputy Superintendent of St. Lucie County Public Schools, Dr. Jonathan Prince, to introduce himself to the public. Following Dr. Prince's comments, the Board will hold a public forum to receive input about Dr. Prince's candidacy for the position of Superintendent of Schools. At this time, we will open up that introduction. Dr. Jonathan Prince, would you please come forward? And as I've said, you're going to introduce yourself to the public, and then directly after, we'll have public input.
All right, so, thank you. I appreciate Chairwoman Mills and Board members and Superintendent Gent this opportunity to make my case for the candidacy of Superintendent of St. Lucie County Public Schools and why I believe I'm not only the best choice, but the obvious choice for this position. I'd also like you to bear with me, this is probably the longest time I'm ever going to continuously talk about myself. It's a little uncomfortable, but I want to share with the public, some of the folks that are here today, a little bit about myself, a little bit about how I got into education, a little bit about what I've been doing and how I arrived at this moment in time. So with that being said, I'm just going to open my public comments by saying I was born in 1969 in a small fishing village in northwest Florida called Fort Walton Beach. My mom ran a nursery out of our house. My father was a small business owner and later converted or had a conversion and became a local pastor. I was one of seven brothers and sisters, and we were a blue collar family. And there was love in our family, but the priority was to make ends meet. I can't remember a single time that my mother or father ever went to a parent conference, ever came to the school, other than to pick me up. My aspiration in education was to finish, to finish high school and join my father's produce company like my brothers and my sister before me. But that changed when I went to high school, and I met someone that changed my life and changed the trajectory of my life, and that was a teacher. His name was Mr. Woolwine. And to describe Mr. Woolwine to you was just to say he looked like the Gene Wilder version of Willy Wonka. And he wore a white lab coat, and he carried a yardstick. He was a Vietnam vet and a former helicopter pilot, and I thought he was the coolest cat around. And Mr. Woolwine had a gift of making every student feel important, and he was very, very popular. And I developed a rapport with Mr. Woolwine, and I started staying after school and helping him with his labs the next day. And unbeknownst to Mr. Woolwine, he was becoming a surrogate father figure for me because I had a very difficult relationship with my own father. And one day after school, Mr. Woolwine asked the question, "Where are you going to college?" I was taken aback by that question. In fact, I had never thought about going to college. I said, "Well, I'm going to finish, and I'm probably going to join my dad's produce company." And he said, "No, no, 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 no. John, you are too bright, and you are destined for great things." And that got me thinking. I had somebody for the first time advocate for me and believe in me. And I wrote letters, and I took the SAT, and I borrowed money, and I was admitted into the University of Florida, and I packed up my car and I moved there, and I lived in a trailer with three guys. And I went to college at night, and I worked during the day, and I worked my way through school, and I graduated with an elementary education degree, and I stayed in Gainesville for my master's year. And I got my first job. The principal that I interned at asked me to take over a fourth grade class. And I finished the year teaching fourth grade, and I learned two very, very valuable lessons about myself at the end of that year because he asked me to come back. Number one, I had no business teaching elementary school. All of my jokes just went right over their head. But the second thing I learned is I had a passion. I loved teaching. So I went to a job fair, and I got offered a job teaching middle school science at one of the largest urban middle schools in Palm Beach County with over 2,000 students. And every day I went to work, and I put on a white lab coat, and I carried a yardstick, just like Mr. Woolwine, and I tried to make sure that those kids felt like I did, that I was going to advocate for them. And a couple of years passed, and I was a good teacher. And someone saw in me something I did not see in myself. And the principal of the time encouraged me to get my leadership degree. She said, "John, you're really good with people." So I did. That same principal hired me two years later as an assistant principal. And I was one of the youngest assistant principals in Palm Beach County at the time. And I was trying to work with teachers, the same teachers I taught with, that were old enough to be my parents. And I had to learn to build trust and make sure I worked extra hard, that they would believe in me. One day, the superintendent came by, and he asked me what my goals were. He said, "John, do you want to be a principal?" And I said, "Dr. Johnson, I think I do." He said, "I will never hire you unless you leave this place." He said, "You were a teacher here, you were administrator here. I want to see what you can do. I want you to go to an F high school. We've got a turnaround project there," and that's exactly what I did. I went to a high school that had earned two consecutive Fs by the state. At the end of the year, we emerged a C, and the superintendent kept his word, and with no interview, I was appointed to principal of Verde Elementary School in Boca Raton. In 2003-04, I led that school to an A rating. Superintendent came back to see me in June of 2004. Said, "John, I'm going to move you." I said, "What did I do wrong?" He said, "No, I've got another failing school. I want you to go this time as the principal." And in 2004, I was appointed principal of Palm Beach Gardens High School, a D-rated school, two consecutive D by the state. And in a single year, we improved that school from a D to a B, and I was one of the State of Florida's Turnaround Principals of the Year. And I continued to work as an administrator in some of the most challenging high-poverty schools in that district. And in every single stop, I raised student achievement, improved graduation rates. And in 2013, something unexpected happened. I got a call from the superintendent's office in Orange County. Dr. Barbara Jenkins, the superintendent, wanted to meet with me, and she had heard of the great things I had done with equity and access with all kids. And I took that meeting, and she offered me a job on the spot to become principal of one of the largest high schools in the state, Colonial High School, with over 3,500 students, 100% free reduced lunch, 90% Hispanic, and struggling, separated by two campuses, four and a half miles apart. I did good work there. In 2014, we improved the school letter grade. We had the largest improvement in writing scores in the entire state. We had some of the largest gains in student achievement in any school in Orange County of over 200 schools, and we improved the graduation rate by 10%. And in 2014, I was awarded by the Hispanic Leadership, the Puerto Rican Man of the Year. And I was given that award by none other than Geraldo Rivera. Things were going pretty good for me. My kids were happy, my wife was a teacher in Orange County. In fact, she was teaching our kids in elementary school as a PE teacher. And 2015, I got an unexpected call. This time from the principal, not the principal, my apologies. This time from the superintendent of Palm Beach County, Mr. E. Wayne Gent, who was sitting on the dais. Mr. Gent told me he was making a transition in his career and something he was going to do, he always dreamed of doing, which is he was going to go back to St. Lucie County as superintendent. He talked about how he came up in St. Lucie County as a teacher and a coach and a principal, and he said what great things this community did for his life. And before he retired, he wanted to make a difference. He said, "John, the district has so much potential. We could do great things. Come and be my deputy." I went home, and I talked to my family, my wife and my four kids, and I made the decision to move again and join him as his deputy superintendent. You may ask, what does a deputy superintendent do? Well, let me tell you. I have to operationalize his vision. I have to make things happen. I have to get us all rowing and working in the same direction. And we've done great things. So let me talk about some of the things that we've accomplished. I want to talk first about COVID. In 2020 of March, when we were at the beginning of the pandemic, Mr. Gent looked at me across the table, and he said, "This is a big deal. You have got to take the lead on this. You've got to be responsible." And I did. I worked with our Chief Operations Officer and made sure every student got a digital device. I worked with our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Wilde, to make sure that our teachers were properly trained so that we could pivot to a digital learning environment. I worked to hire a COVID lead, Bridget Hargadine, to help lead this work and create a handbook that followed CDC guidelines to make sure our boys and girls were safe and our employees were safe. We signed a letter of understanding with the union that created a rubric to make sure our most fragile employees could work from home. We established a culture. Mr. Gent says we have a great culture. I'd say we have a culture of fairness. We have a culture of accountability. I'm very proud of the culture that we've established here. We've provided opportunities. We've provided opportunities for all students. In 2015, our graduation rate was 78%. If you were a child of color, your graduation rate was in the low 60s. Last year, our graduation rate for Black, White, and Hispanic students was 95%. We are one of four districts in the entire state that has five consecutive years of 90-plus graduation rates. We've increased student achievement in our elementary schools. We've provided opportunities for our middle school students to take high school credits in middle school and geometry and algebra. Why is that important? It's important because that is a pathway to taking college credit in high school. We've doubled the number of students that are taking college credits in high school and passing those tests, saving thousands of dollars in tuition for our students, saving their parents' money, creating first-generation college students like me in high school and changing their thinking to not, "If I'm going to finish school, but where am I going to college?" And for students that aren't bound for college, we've created workforce development opportunities. We've tripled the number of students that are passing industry certification exams so that they have a skill or a trade that they pass to test so they can immediately enter our workforce. We passed a referendum in 2018. That's critically important moving forward. That referendum allows for a school resource deputy in every single one of our schools, public and private. It pays for additional compensation for our teachers so that we can be competitive in a competitive market. We want the best teachers in front of our boys and girls. It pays for additional mental health counselors, especially in a time of COVID. It is critically important. It pays for additional dollars for our fine arts programs. The performance of "Mamma Mia!" at Port St. Lucie High School Thursday night was fantastic. Kids should chase their dreams, and they come in a lot of different ways. We've been good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. I have revamped the allocations process, and that is how we distribute resources to our schools, saving the district over $1 million. That money has been passed on in the form of raises to our employees and bonuses. We continue to increase the credibility and respectability of our district. Prior to 2015, in overall student achievement, this district ranked as low as 58 out of 67 counties, ranked no better than 42nd. In the short time that Mr. Gent and I have been here, we've ranked as high as 22nd. And we currently rank 25th, for the first time, outperforming Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach Counties districts with unlimited resources. Some of the board members and community members have expressed we should be doing a search. We should be conducting an interview. I'd submit to you that I've been in a six-and-a-half-year interview, and I've delivered, and I've delivered results. So if I am your selection, what would my priorities be? This is going to need a sip of water. The first priority is putting COVID in the rearview. We're going to be addressing this issue for years to come. We have to somehow figure out a way to recapture what was lost, accelerate learning, provide robust opportunities for our students to gain as much traction as possible while also balancing teacher burnout. We have to continue with our climate of accountability and fairness. We have to recommit to the four pillars Mr. Gent brought to our district, which is teaching and learning, talent development, community engagement, and safe and caring schools. We have to provide additional compensation for our employees. With high inflation and rising healthcare costs, the folks that serve our kids every day are grossly underpaid. We have to figure a way to carve out more money for them. But the most important priority, the most important priority, has nothing to do with the adults. It has to do with our students. We have to remember, they are not here for us. We are here for them. I have to listen to the students in our system. My daughter's one of them. She attends at K-8. Last week, I met with a few student groups. One of the student groups is representative of all the high schools in our district, and we talked about the issues that were important to them. One of the issues that was important was the inequity in transportation and the inability of some of our children to get from the high school to the local community college and how we could help with that problem. Christian Baca, who chairs that committee, is here tonight. Christian, I haven't solved that problem, but I'm working on it. I have to listen to our parents. I'm a parent in our system. I have skin in the game. And I can tell you right now, our parents should have choice, and they should have input as to what happens in their schools. I need to listen to our parents because I know we can't achieve the great things I know we're destined for if we are not working together in collaboration with our parents. I have to listen to our local clergy, our community members. I have to listen to our business leaders. Our business leaders know the industries and the jobs that our kids are going to have to be prepared for if they're not college-bound to immediately enter the workforce. I've got to commit to making sure in November that voters believe in us, and they will renew that referendum, that they believe that we have to keep our kids safe, that we have to be competitive in a job market and provide additional compensation to our teachers, that mental health is important to our kids, that fine arts are important. I want to make sure we rebuild Westwood. The Fort Pierce community deserves a flagship high school, and it's about time that Westwood is rebuilt. And I can tell you, we are on time and on schedule right now. But not just that, we have to make sure that we're committed to building the two new schools planned for tradition because in five to seven years, we will be in dire need of the additional seats that those will create, and they have to be done on time and on budget. So my last priority is to listen to our board members. I have to hear your priorities. This is the most important relationship, and this is the most important decision you've got to make. You've got to believe that I'm the right person for the job, like I do. You've got to be committed to working together as a team and building a trusting and transparent relationship because in St. Lucie Public Schools, we have to have one vision and one voice. Before I conclude tonight, I want to say a couple of thank yous. Number one, I appreciate your time. But I want to start with thanking my family. My wife Heather, my four kids, Heather's a teacher. Believe me, I get an evaluation from her on my job performance every day when I get home. But I want to say thanks to my kids and the number of times that I've uprooted their lives when I've been called to serve in a different place. And they've never complained. They've been troopers. They've made new friends, and they're better for it. And they've never made me, for a moment, feel guilty. So I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the principals and the teachers that may be watching, the administrators in the building, the people six-and-a-half years ago, when I arrived, they made me feel like I was part of the family. And I made friends, and my children made friends with their children. And it's everything that Mr. Gent said it was. And also, all that we've accomplished has been a teamwork effort. Nothing gets done in isolation. It's always done with people. I want to thank Mr. Gent. Mr. Gent has been the most important professional relationship of my life. Mr. Gent saw something in me that Mr. Woolwine saw, that a former principal of mine saw, but maybe I didn't see in myself and believed in me. And all I ever wanted, quite honestly, is to make sure you're proud. I want to thank Mr. Woolwine. He's not around, but like all the teachers in our system, and we have over 3,000, they're changing lives every day, and they're making a difference every day. And I want to thank them, and I want to thank him for being my advocate when my parents were unable to. I'm going to close with a story, true story. My son Maverick, who graduated last year from Treasure Coast High School. The first day of his senior year, Maverick came home from school. And I said, as usual, "Maverick, how was your day?" And Maverick said, "Dad, the day was really, really good, and the day was really, really bad." And I said, "Well, share with me, Maverick. What was the day, why was it so good?" He said, "Dad, I have Miss DeMayo again. Miss DeMayo's not here tonight, but she's normal at these meetings. And Miss DeMayo was my son's favorite teacher." And I said, "Maverick, that's great. You've had three consecutive years of Miss DeMayo. Good for you. So tell me what was so bad." "Dad, I had Miss DeMayo again, and she's so frickin' hard." So, Mr. DeMayo, if you're out there watching on Facebook, I want to say thank you for having high expectations for my son. Thank you for seeing something in him, and now he has a passion for writing that he may make a career of. And I would say to you, board members, as you consider this decision, I hope you have high expectations for me if I am your selection as the next superintendent of St. Lucie Public Schools. Thank you for your consideration.[1488.52][1488.52](Applause)
Dr. Prince, thank you so much for that interview. You had us captivated all the way through. And we thank you for your work, not just here in this district, but the work before this district. But we really do thank you for your work here in this district. So at this time, we're going to move forward, and we are going to begin to do our public forum. We will open it up at this time to receive any type of comments regarding Dr. Prince's candidacy for the position of Superintendent of Schools. Directly after that, we will, as a board, may have a discussion, and then at our discretion, we may have an action. So at this time, the first speaker will be Christian Baca. Christian is a senior at Treasure Coast High School, and he is the chairman of the Youth Advisory Council. And so he is going to be the first one to speak.
Greetings, school board members, Superintendent Gent, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince, and community members. My name is Christian Baca. As Dr. Mills mentioned, I am a senior at Treasure Coast High School, and I also serve as the chairman to the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, where we represent 41,000 students within the school district. And each public high school has two representatives, along with Mosaic Digital Academy. And so we are a platform that allows students to be decision-makers in the assessment of the needs of our students. Our council had the distinctive privilege of interviewing Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince last week. We were able to speak with Dr. Prince, not as the deputy superintendent, but as an adult, an adult who is responsive to our concerns and who seeks to defend our interests. Dr. Prince has a proven record in advocating for the needs of our minority and low-income students. By expanding access to collegiate-level courses and promoting equitable access to post-secondary resources, he has dedicated his career to reducing achievement gaps among our marginalized communities. In a school district that is approximately two-thirds minority and 70% of students on free or reduced lunch, Dr. Prince possesses not only the intrinsic ability to empathize with community hardships, but his ability to consistently push our students to realize their potential. Having served as an educational leader across various school districts, Dr. Prince exhibits a unique, dynamic approach to community involvement. With our county's population expected to dramatically increase in the upcoming years, our council has full confidence in Dr. Prince's ability to respond effectively to that change and maintain his renowned optimism. His commitment to our school district's success is also evident. I will also say that, as a student, too often we are guilty of embracing normalcy but not recognizing the grueling efforts of those operating behind the scenes. Every day, like my peers, I'm picked up by the school bus to attend school. Every day, like my peers, I'm able to interact with countless rich educational resources. Every day, like my peers, I go to school confident in my safety as a student. It is because of Dr. Prince's leadership that we can say that those experiences are normal. It is because of his efforts that we have the opportunity to succeed despite our financial circumstances or ethnic background. Dr. Prince has repeatedly exceeded community standards with his work ethic, dynamic educational approach, and captivating personality. It is because of his leadership that he encourages so many youth within our community to return to our school district as educators, including myself. He, in my eyes, is the best candidate to represent the St. Lucie Public School District as the superintendent of schools, and he will truly have a profound impact on our school district's operation for years to come. Therefore, on behalf of the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council and the 41,000 students we represent, we are delighted to share our endorsement of Dr. Prince's candidacy for Superintendent of Schools with the school board and the general public. Dr. Prince truly exemplifies each child every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baca. Now, I think we allowed a little over three minutes for Mr. Baca because he's a student, and it's all about, what, our children, right? But for everyone else, it's three minutes per person. And we do have our attorney right over here that's going to be clocking you all the way. And I'm asking Attorney Shad Doctor, please, let him know when it's time to sit down so we can keep the meeting going flowing. we can keep the meeting going flowing. So, thank you again, Mr. Baca. We know who you're supporting as candidate. Tyler Evans is our next speaker.
Good evening, board members. I have a concern about the process of choosing the next superintendent, not with the candidate Dr. Prince himself. I ask that the board practices equity in the selection of the next superintendent. By remaining impartial and allowing all prospective applicants to be considered for the position, we can ensure that the best overall candidate is chosen. We could really benefit from a fresh set of eyes. As I see it now, we have prioritized our consideration towards Dr. Prince because he and his capabilities are familiar to us. But as quoted by Trevor Noah, comfort can be dangerous. Comfort provides a floor, but also a ceiling. I wish for the next superintendent to go past providing St. Lucy Public Schools with just a solid foundation. I want them to break boundaries. I want them to push us to go above and beyond to ensure that we, as a school district, achieve our highest achievable potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. We will move right along to the next speaker, which is Robert Brown. Please come to the podium, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, school board. My name is Robert Brown. Good evening, everyone. I thought I was going to be the only fly in the ointment tonight. Thank goodness I'm not. I do have that same concern. I have been affiliated with this school system for a very long time. I've kind of walked away from it for a bit because I was retired and I left this stuff alone. But I'm really concerned about us just kind of appointing the next person without really going out there and taking a look at what is out there. I have no problem with the candidate, but he can put his name in the hat like everyone else. My mom used to say, she always used to say, "The cream will rise to the top. If he's the person, then he will be the person." But if we don't go out there and see what's out there, then it's upon us to be for our children, and that's the number-one thing. I know I'm not going to use up my three minutes because I'm going to get right to the point. I really want the board to look at this and be equal across the board and do what we need to do. Advisory committee used to pick the next superintendent. I was on the board that picked Mr. Lannan, and I think we did a darn good job, and I think they can still do the same job again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next, we will have Mr. Larry Lee come to the podium, please.
Good evening, members and Mr. Gent. I'm here to support Dr. Prince, and I'm going to tell you why. As you know, I served in the Florida House of Representatives for three terms, and while there, I saw what happened with this school district. When I went there in 2012, we were rated a very low school. We had a ton of failing schools. I served as the ranking member on education in Tallahassee, K-12 and higher ed. I got a chance to see, while serving on those appropriation committees, how the funds were allocated. And when we looked at St. Lucy County, and we had these Ds and failing schools, and how under Dr. Gent, Mr. Gent, and this school board and this staff, St. Lucy County came to these numbers that you see right here. And as far as going outside, as some before me have said, it's time that we start looking within our own. You know what you have. You go outside, you don't know what you're getting. And everything that looks good on paper, when you get it, I've seen districts go outside and hire people and realize they made a mistake, and then they got to buy the contract out. So I'm not for that if you've got someone here. And we need to start grooming. I said the same thing to the city of Fort Pierce and St. Lucy County. When you have people in place, you start grooming these people. You have a succession plan, and we need to make sure that we do more of that. But going into these national searches, you don't know what you're going to get. Someone may look good on paper, but when they get here, they got a whole different agenda than what you thought that you were getting. So, for that reason, and seeing what I saw in Tallahassee, when this school district had numbers like 60 and 70% graduation rates, and now you're seeing above 90%, and in some cases, 100%, you look at Lincoln Park Academy, one of the top schools in this country, rated every year, top 100, right over there in the Lincoln Park community. You look at Westwood High School, a failing school, graduating, I think, something like 60%. They're in the 90-plus rate. See, sometimes we sit around and we complain about what we have, and we don't open our eyes up to see what we already have. So my point is, you know, stand tall and stand firm. You're going to have people criticize you, but that goes with the turf. When you got elected, it goes with the turf, so bite the bullet and do the right thing and hire this man.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Chris Fogel.
Thank you. Dr. Donna Mills and the school board, on behalf of the Economic Development Council of St. Lucy County, it is our distinct pleasure to announce our support of Dr. John Prince as the next superintendent of schools. With the upcoming retirement of Superintendent Mr. Gent, we believe Dr. Prince, the current deputy superintendent, is uniquely qualified to lead St. Lucy Public Schools and will continue on the pathway of academic excellence, student achievement, and success. As you know, the EDC's mission is to help create sustainable, high-paying jobs through the attraction of new businesses while supporting the expansion and retention of existing businesses. The school system is a critically important partner to us and our economic development and our workforce readiness efforts. Through our longstanding partnership with the school board and Superintendent Gent, we have helped create literally thousands of quality jobs and spread economic prosperity to our residents now and well into the foreseeable future. With that growth comes the need for a pipeline of skilled workers from entry to advanced levels. And more importantly, an educational foundation that will attract students to best prepare and train them to be a new generation of great employees and enriching careers. Our goal can only be achieved when our partners and stakeholders are all working in concert on agreed-upon strategies. Dr. Prince will allow us to further strengthen our critically important partnership with the school system as the number of important career and technical education industry certifications earned by students will continue to be fostered and supported under the leadership as it has been under Superintendent Gent. The EDC has great confidence that Dr. Prince will not only maintain but enhance the current robust economic growth our community has experienced by providing students with educational opportunities that will support lifelong success. With his demonstrated leadership qualities, requisite experience in management skills, and support of diversity, equity, and inclusion in his team, the workplace, and the classroom, Dr. Prince certainly has the capacity to take the school system to the next level. St. Lucy County is historically a significant place in time regarding its economic growth, diversity, and overall development. The school system plays an instrumental role in contributing and sustaining this effort by educating and training our emerging and diverse workforce. With that in mind, together with Dr. Prince's personal vested interest in seeing his community succeed, we believe that Dr. Prince is the professional best suited to help lead our school system into the future. Thank you very much for your favorable consideration of Dr. Prince, and we look forward to future success. On my personal note, I also agree, Dr. Massey, who many of you really think has done an outstanding job, was appointed. There was no search committee. But sometimes you need a search committee. There wasn't a successor.
That's time.
So they went out to seek a new president. So take that with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fogel. Sheriff Cam Mascara, please come to the podium.
Dr. Mills, school board members, good evening. Can I have his two minutes also that he voided? No, I can't. Son of a gun. Listen, hearing all of the educational qualities shared tonight, we are in a great place in St. Lucy County. You know, on the way here, I received from Lydia the email outlining the shining stars of education. And those of you in education, you need a big round of applause because St. Lucy County schools are something special, and we take that for granted. Also, something we take for granted that we don't talk much about is the safety of our campuses and of our students. And let's not forget, next week, we recognize the tragic event four years ago in Parkland at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. That is the deadliest attack on a high school on American soil. Seventeen dead, seventeen injured. As soon as we were made aware of that incident, myself, Superintendent Gent, Chief Deputy Brian Hester, and Dr. Prince all got together. And those of you that were here that day realize the anxiety and fear, not only in us, but with administrators, teachers, parents, and students. The next day, there was a school resource deputy in every public school in St. Lucy County that could not have been done without their leadership. And as we looked forward, we worked on a plan to make that permanent. Dr. Gent and I, two weeks after that tragic event, stood on Floresta Elementary Campus and held a press conference. And we shared with our community, with our teachers, with their parents, with their students, that these schools in St. Lucy County were going to be safe. And that's what they've been ever since. Couldn't have done it without their leadership. I've been here 47 years, 22 years as sheriff, and I've seen national searches, and I've seen local searches. I've also seen great leaders mentor their successors, and that's what great leaders do. I'm currently doing it with my chief deputy, Brian Hester, and I've seen what Dr. Gent has done with Dr. Prince, and I fully endorse Dr. Prince as being our next superintendent. You know, relationships and leadership is hard to come by, and when you bring someone from the outside that doesn't have the institutional knowledge, the community history, as well of the relationships to succeed, they might succeed, but it sure does take them a long time. He's ready to go. There's no doubt about it. He knows the institutional knowledge, the community history, and he's built the relationships over the time he's been here to succeed. So again, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Sheriff. I want to say how pleased I'm sure the entire board is to see people from within our community that we know well come before us and speak one way or the other. But to see our community show up shows that you are really concerned about your next superintendent of schools, and we appreciate that very much. Mr. Charlie Frank Matthews, please come to the podium.
Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, and other colleagues of the school board, I was kind of praying that I'd be behind the shelf, and it happened. Let me tell you, I'm Charlie Frank Matthews, and I'm president of the St. Lucy County Concerned Citizen Cooperation Group. And I'm appalled to be here to talk about hiring. And the reason I'm appalled, I'm going to give it to you in a few statements. First of all, we recommend that you hire the superintendent through advertising. I think this is the way everybody would look at it. The second, we recommend that it becomes the opportunity of equal opportunity. And under that caption would be, we are an equal opportunity employer if you advertise, and I'm hoping that you would. C, we recommend that you stop doing favoritism hiring. Favoritism hiring, we got one person come, nobody else. Next, which is D, we recommend that you do an in-house advertising as strong as you would do a national or state because you don't know what you have among you. And there are other things that why you need to do it. You'll find you've got extra talent already above, not so much a superintendent, but in case you need a person in another position. Sometimes even down to the geniuses. You don't know how much education they have because you don't do advertising. And I would strongly discourage the school board to even get involved in it. I want to talk about a couple of things of historical value. First of all, I look at the fact that when we talk about best place to work, I see best place to work when you're being fair. I see best place to work when you're giving others the opportunity. I see best place to work when you consider a good in-house where you will look out for women, for blacks, for minorities, and for those who have strived to be part of an excellent program, who went to school or went on to college to get further, masters and PhD degrees. Those kind of people deserve some kind of consideration. And I also look at the fact that the great violence and the street committee, when they meet, they think about the days of desegregation for the St. Lucy County school system, when we did not include people fair, whether it was a principal or coach. We don't want to go back to that. And I strongly discourage you as a school board to get involved in that. And last, I want to talk about the fact that the old cliche, under the tree or at the corner stove, we talk about the fact that whites sometimes think they're right. Blacks get bit. Browns, you might can stick around. I'm very concerned about any.
That's time. Thank you.
And I think you need to, as a school board, look at the fact that this community is equal and have a lot of diversity in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Charlie Matthews. Ms. Stephanie Morgan. Is she here? No? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. It'll be short. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Gent. My name is Anna Rodriguez, and I am the principal at Alapara Flatska High School. I started my career in St. Lucy in 1996, so I've been here for more than 20 years. I have worked for different administrative teams and superintendents. When Dr. Prince came to St. Lucy, he changed the tone. He changed the way that we did business. He brought about a sense of urgency, created a strategic timeline for improvement with intentional action steps to achieve intentional outcomes. Dr. Prince emphasized the importance of equity and learning opportunities for all students, not just students in some schools or students in some academic zones or groups or programs. All students, including students with disabilities, students who speak English as a second language, students who struggle with discipline, students from different socioeconomic status. Academic excellence for all students. Dr. Prince also brought about togetherness and communication and collaboration in all the district departments. This maximized the resources at the school sites. Everybody started working together, walking in the same direction, to hit the target, which is our mission, for students to graduate from safe and caring schools. Board members, I hope for a smooth transition from one superintendent to the next. I pray for clear direction, consistency, and stability. Let us continue the work that we started under his leadership. We don't have to start over. We can build upon success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, board members. I'm not here with any preconceived notions at all. I'm here to gather information. I am an educator. I've been in education for 50 years. I was a consultant for 20 years. I've been connected to St. Lucy County since 1996. I subbed in St. Lucy County. I worked in the school system here. I served four years where you did, on the Board of Education, as a vice president. So I'm from up in the hills of West Virginia, okay, now living in Florida. And I'm here basically to gather information on who you're planning to succeed. And that's what I'm looking at. what I'm looking at. I think there's four pillars that we need to be thinking about. The things that we need to be looking for are the accountability of the teachers in the classroom, because what I know from working as a consultant and traveling around states is the success of the student is based upon the teacher in the classroom, okay, and whether they are credible or not. The second pillar is the accountability of the principal, because since I've subbed in this county, I can tell you exactly how students, okay, how they behave. It is a direct result, okay, of who's leading the school system. The fourth pillar, the third pillar is, we need to support the parents. As I've worked as a member of the Critical Team, the Community Impact Team, I'm kind of new to this, okay, because I've been a caregiver for the last two years for my husband, and my husband just passed away in October, so I'm kind of new to this speaking in front of the public. But the last thing I want to say is, it's about the interaction of the students and between the students. And as a sub who's subbed in this county, okay, I saw some things that I think, you know, we really need to be taking care of that. And as a person who sat behind, as a board member, I was the one that when the test scores came out, it was, oh, Jan McNeil, get her those test scores. Can't you see she's ready? She's ready for those test scores. So I would take them home at night, and I would go through them and look and look and look and see, okay, what is it that we need to do? What do we need to do to make our scores better? So I would ask, okay, Dr. Pierce, are you are going to be meeting with teachers in the classroom? Is there going to be an opportunity for teachers to meet with you, okay, and have lunch with you? As a board member, I went into the school building every Monday, even though I was a full-time consultant. Monday was set aside for my, for the board agenda. So I think that what we really need to do here tonight is just to gather information, and it's, we're gathering a lot of information. I'm for fixing students. I'm for fighting for students. That's what it's all about, fighting for kids.
That's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jan McNeil. We have now Monterey Miller, Ms. Buchanan. And I think it's only right if I have a principal come up to make sure all of you know who she's a principal of. She is a principal of Fort Pierce Central High School. Ms. Buchanan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Mr. Gent. You already said it, Dr. Mills. I am the proud principal, Monterey Miller Buchanan, at Fort Pierce Central High School. And this is my sixteenth year in St. Lucie County schools. I was a guidance counselor at Treasure Coast High School, a guidance counselor at Westwood. I also worked as an assistant principal at Centennial, two years as a principal of Forest Grove, and here I am, principal of Fort Pierce Central. Presently, I can attest to the continuous improvement of our county under the leadership of Mr. Gent and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Prince. Having served on cabinet, representing our principals during the onset of the COVID pandemic, I witnessed how closely Dr. Prince works with Mr. Gent and the entire team. It was clear that our concerns were not taken for granted or discarded as frivolous. But instead, we were provided with the resources necessary to navigate unknown waters. Dr. Prince is a primary liaison between principals, Mr. Gent, and other cabinet members. He ensures we are constantly communicating and that we advocate for students. He is, overall, I observed, within cabinet, an atmosphere of trust and a clear message that we, the principals and leaders, are allowed to share our concerns and provide feedback. The result, the development of action plans during the pandemic, implementations of such plans, and clear follow-up. Now, and I think most importantly, just speaking from the heart, as a parent of three children in St. Lucie County schools, my son recently graduated with his dual enrollment, ACE diploma, and AP credits. And I say that not to brag, but I say that because this was a young man who almost did not go on to fourth grade. Actually, he went to summer school. As a young parent, it's sometimes very difficult to monitor and know everything that's out there for our students. I can honestly say, because of the programs and because of the implementations and the monitoring that Ms. Dr. Prince and Mr. Gent have set in place, my son was charged to, I would say, outdo his potential. And so, I can say personally, as a parent, I saw firsthand what is being done in our county for our young black men and for all our students. I must also comment on the emphasis on social-emotional learning. We have to recognize that the most important thing are our students. And Mr. Gent and Dr. Prince, you have definitely illustrated that and taught us that we must prioritize our students. So I firmly endorse Dr. Prince.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Mary Wilcox?
Mario.
Mario, would you please come to the podium? Thank you, Mr. Wilcox.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, members of the school board, Mr. Gent, all citizens in attendance. My name is Minister Mario Wilcox, and I stand before you as an honorably served veteran, one who's homegrown in St. Lucie County, went off and done many great things around the world, including United Nations, and come back to contribute to the district that I take pride in and that I love. But this isn't about me. This is about our future, our children, and our children's children. I don't have any roasting to do, nor does I have any endorsements, because I was taught, even in the ministry of a youth ministry Dr. Mills has coming up, that your reward comes from heaven. Now, while I recognize the accomplishments of Dr. Prince, and I have experience with him, and I admire his body of work, I also have a concern. And the concern doesn't have anything to do with Dr. Prince. The concern has about, has something to do with us, as well as who we choose to have elected in front of us. And again, this is not a roast to interview up there, but however, it's unfair to Dr. Prince to receive pushback. The reason why? Mr. Lee stated that we need to groom. Am I correct? Now, how do we groom? We groom by having a system in place. In order to recognize the diamond in rough, we must have people out there toiling the rough to recognize those diamonds. Though people that toil the rough are our equity boards, our advisory boards, our equity officers. So that way, we will have, what Mr. Lee says, a succession plan. And this is my recommendation. I don't see any other candidates here. I see Dr. Prince. So of course, I could speak well of him, but there's no other applicants. And it's a pushback that I see that's going to come from the community. I'm already hearing it, so therefore, the people that's not able to be here, I told them I will bring it to the forefront. Now, it's on you to ensure a fair and equitable process to everyone, including a viable candidate as Dr. Prince. And in order for us to have the continuity, we must fix what's broken. So we need to put a system in place so we could, so that we can continue to make our great strides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Alicia Nash, Esquire, attorney. Nash, please come to the podium.
Good evening. It's Ayesha Nash.
Ayesha.
All right. Good evening. The St. Lucie County NAACP requests that this board does not move forward with the appointment tonight. This is a very crucial decision for our community, the stakeholders, the school personnel, as well as our students. Thus, diligence, transparency, integrity, and inclusivity should be involved when selecting this individual. The goal of this board should be to select the best possible leader for our schools, not one that is closest in proximity, because that's the easiest and the least expensive. The selection of our next leader should include a search, even if hiring within, that allows input from the students, faculty, staff members, and other school board personnel, civic and organization leaders, and the community. This board should compare educational backgrounds, professional experience, and professional disciplinary action among all candidates. Besides proximity, what criteria is used to select a school superintendent? Who was all considered? Why were they eliminated? The selection process should be, should be public unless there is not an official process at all. So as the president of the St. Lucie County NAACP, we all once again asking that you do not move forward with this appointment. This has nothing to do with Dr. Prince. I've worked with him when I was a teacher. I can say a whole lot of excellent things about him. But the process should be fair. It should be equitable, and we should be able to have some type of input in this selection. We are also asking, if the board does open up a search, that you allow a community board to also come in and interview those candidates as well. As always, as I stated before, the last time I was here, the NAACP is here to help. If you need any opinions or want to know what the community has as issues, definitely feel free to reach out to us, but we are asking on behalf of our community that you do open up a search and you allow the community to participate in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nash.
You're welcome.
Felicia Nixon, she is the proud principal of Longwood Elementary.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Gent. My name is Felicia Nixon. For the past twenty-five years, I have worked here in our school system. I have served as a Green Zone Title I principal for the past eighteen years at the elementary and the middle school level. I currently serve as the principal of Longwood Elementary. For the past seven years, I have witnessed tremendous growth of our students here in our great district. In St. Lucie County public schools, the vision is clear, and there is a climate of continuous improvement. Dr. John Prince is a key leader on Superintendent Gent's team. Dr. Prince actively facilitates and articulates the vision of our school district. The vision drives the work, and Dr. Prince effectively leads as he keeps the vision at the forefront when meeting with school leaders to analyze data and set goals. He has facilitated the development of data management systems and methods for principals to monitor learning, which ensures a sustained effort on academic achievement. He works with all district leaders and school leaders to ensure that multiple sources of academic data are analyzed, monitored, to identify areas of improvement, opportunities for growth, and to assess instructional practices. I respect his leadership, because he knows that each school has its own set of challenges. Therefore, he meets with individual school leaders to ensure that necessary resources and supports are allocated based upon demographic data, discipline data, attendance data, and achievement data. In order to achieve the vision, there must be a climate of continuous improvement. Dr. Prince is relentless, and he understands that continuous improvement cycles require constant examination of what's working and what's not working. He has my adoration, because he plans, investigates, analyzes, and collects feedback to make informed decisions. For example, he has met with school leaders to discuss the underrepresentation of minority students in middle school algebra and geometry. He also prioritizes school security. In addition, he monitors Skyward Grade reports to ensure that an overabundance of Fs are not assigned to students, because he believes that grades should not be used to punish students. Dr. Prince is respected, because he will revise, refine, and/or eliminate any initiatives or practice that are not benefiting students. He cares about students, and his decisions are based upon student achievement. In closing, Dr. Prince is a visionary, multi-skilled, communicative, ambitious, and committed school leader, and he has my endorsement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nixon. Moving onward to another principal, Glenn Ruste, and that's, he is the principal of Northport, the proud principal of Northport K-8.
Good evening, Superintendent Gent, Madam Chair, Dr. Mills, and our school board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Glenn Ruste, and I am the proud principal at Northport, VPK through eighth grade. I'd like to start tonight by thanking you, Mr. Gent. Your leadership during the past seven years has been exemplary. We have been blessed to be under your leadership, especially during the last two unprecedented years. It is hard to believe that this is my thirtieth year as an educator in St. Lucie Public Schools. I've had the opportunity to work under five superintendents during that time, starting at Garden City Elementary. The fact is that we have been blessed with a school board who put children first and has had the wisdom to choose our leadership wisely. You now have a chance to continue that legacy. I heard, have heard a wise man say numerous times, only take for granted those things you want to go wrong. I don't want to take this for granted, so I have asked to speak to you tonight. I believe that Dr. Prince is the right choice to lead St. Lucie Public Schools as our next superintendent. One of the first memories I have with Dr. Prince was when he was leading a data dive with administration at the beginning of the school year. He specifically said, if I were a middle school principal today, I'd put all my Level Three students into algebra. We were able to do this at Northport before the students returned, and as a result, over the past six years, we've had over two hundred additional students succeed at passing algebra during the middle school and starting high school with high school credits. His leadership demonstrated a strategic outlook of how to utilize data results to deliberately plan for our students' success. Since then, I've learned under Dr. Prince to be more strategic and specific-looking at data and how to use it to progress and make decisions. We have limited resources, and that leadership has been instrumental in the growth we have experienced as a district and that I have experienced personally. Through unit assessments, Performance Matters, Power BI, to name a few, we have available to us a plethora of data and information to support our decisions as we determine what is best for our children. The time I spent as a principal representative on the superintendent's cabinet further cemented this, as I witnessed his leadership firsthand on a weekly basis. Dr. Prince was essential as we discussed what the barriers were and how to eliminate or address those barriers, how to support our students, teachers, and staff, and ultimately, how to get the best return on investment to give our students the best chance of success, not to mention his keen sense of humor. Ultimately, this does come down to our children. They are the reason we have become educators. Mr. Gent and Dr. Prince have demonstrated an incredible skill at removing barriers, getting things done when they can't be done, and making success for our students, teachers, and staff a top priority. One of our highest priorities is student graduating from safe and caring schools. Based on the graduation rate of seventy-six from seven years ago, the increase in graduation rate represents almost three thousand more twelfth-grade students have graduated. I would highly recommend that we keep Dr. Prince and that leadership by making Dr. Prince St. Lucie Public Schools' next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruste. We have one more speaker request form before me, and it's the last, we say the last for the best here. My mentor, the Queen is here. Ms. Queen Townsend, would you please come to the podium? Madam Chair, Mr. Gent, and school board members, I am absolutely delighted to be here this evening. One of the reasons that I, and if you say I'm last, that's fine, because it's so inspiring to me to have heard from these principals, because I want you to know that the position of a principal is the most important position in the district.
is the most important position in the district. Now, it's important to have good leadership. It's important to have good support people. But if we don't have strong principals, we will not have strong schools. Now, that's coming from a former principal and I say that from experience. However, my purpose for being here tonight, and it is just a pleasure to be here. And I had to reminisce over the years that I worked in St. Lucie County. I retired in 2001, so I've been retired probably as long as Mr. Gent, Mr. Prince has been in the world. And I would have, I would have retired much sooner than I did. What St. Lucie County had a process in place back during my time, and I don't know if they realized what it was, but every time I got ready to retire, they'd say, would you stay on with this new superintendent? To help show them around. And I, I had the opportunity to work under a number of superintendents. All of them came to us during that time as a result of a search. We made, we made some terrible mistakes. We had some bad superintendents. We had some poor superintendents. And we had some good superintendents. And now we have a great superintendent. And I am of the opinion that it's because of the time that they spent in the trenches, the amount of time they spent preparing themselves. And as a result of that time spent, I just want to point out to the board that it takes an effective superintendent, but it also takes an effective board. And you have got to be in a place where you realize that the choosing of a superintendent should not start when the other one is walking out the door.
That's time, thank you.
You gotta let the queen speak a couple, another minute, please. Thank you, Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It really does take me longer to say what I have to say now that I'm older.
I think she was just getting really to the point.
That's right. Because I want to say that I was impressed with Dr. Prince when he came here, but he didn't just come here. Mr. Gent, who was the superintendent chosen through the search process, brought him here in an effort to prepare for the day that he was going to leave. And that should always be the process. So if you choose Dr. Prince, Dr. Prince ought to be bringing someone in here in the position that he is in because I want you to know, and this is no disrespect to the sitting superintendent, but the next superintendent in line is really the deputy superintendent. Back during my day, it was assistant superintendent. Because that person reports to everybody. It is the most difficult job in the district. They've got to satisfy the superintendent. They've got to try to satisfy all the principals. They've got to satisfy the parents. They've got to be into the community. It is the most challenging job that you can have. And apparently, Dr. Prince has done it well. And one of the reasons I think that he has done it well is because shortly after he came here, he sought out to find some people in the community who was aware of where the, where the, where the problems were. And he called me. He said, I understand that you were here long before I decided to come this way. And I shall always respect the conversation that I had with him. And he had available through me and some other retired administrators and teachers in this county, people that he could call on when he needed to. And I'm proud to say that we have worked through some very serious issues, but he has been open enough to, to bring it back to the district and do what had to be done in order to correct some issues that we were able to see out in the community and hear what people are saying in the community and yet communicate that back to him.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.
One, one, one last thing. Education is facing the most serious challenges that I can recall in all of my career and lifetime. So not only do we need a well-qualified superintendent, we need an effective board, we need an involved and supportive community, and not just when something becomes a big issue, but when things are going well, all of us need to be working together. So if this team is in place, and it sounds like it is to me, then I submit to you that we should continue with the visible champions that we have and prepare for the next level at the level where that Dr. Prince holds it this time. There's always a time to get away from tradition. It's time for a paradigm shift. And maybe it's the second place that you need to be searching for because most of the people that you get come from assistant superintendents when, when the search is on. Because Florida is experiencing more resignations of superintendents now than they have in a long, long time. And I can certainly understand why. Because not only must you be concerned about the children's well-being, but you've got this, the pandemic, the online learning, the offline learning, and all these other kinds of learnings that we're having to deal with. And this is probably not the best time to get an unknown.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend.
Thank you.
For those of you who do not know, Ms. Townsend, she was Deputy Superintendent, I believe, for many years and at one time interim superintendent. And she's been with this district for a long time and have done incredible work here. So we, we feel it's only respectable to give her that time to speak to us because we need to be listeners. And, and, and to all, everyone that have spoken, take it in and digest it and analyze it and see where we're really at and make the best and moves that we can make as a board. So at this time, we're going to open up board discussion. Please feel free to get the conversation started. If there's a board member that wants to start speaking. Nobody wants to say anything?
Of course I will, yes. Troy was waiting for me. It's great to see Queen Townsend here. Wow, I don't know if you remember, I got introduced to you 23 years ago by Gertrude Walker when I was running against six people the first time I ran. And you always had my respect and I'm great to see you here. And I don't know if I'm the oldest person in the building tonight. I might not be now, so I don't know. I had to say, I agree with every, everyone, everything, everybody, I said, even you, Charlie, I agree with you. But I know you weren't here to endorse Mr. Dr. Prince, but I know you like him, I know. And it should maybe a process. Before I go into my diatribe about the editorial in the newspaper yesterday, I want to say we're not, we're not bound, Ms. Molly. We are the governing board when it comes to hiring a superintendent. We can just hire them, we can fire them at will. We do the contract. They're vetted every single year. As Mrs. Holly said, we've been vetting Mr. Prince for seven years. Okay, so it's, it's an ongoing process. They're accountable to this board. So do we have to have a, a review board? No, we did not. Did we have to follow a process for that? Not really. Should we have? Blame me for that because I'm, I'm the guy that jumped the gun. Okay, I, I wanted to do it right away. As Mr. Prince said, he was the obvious choice. Having said that, there was an article in the paper yesterday. They call them op-eds now, editorial, by a gentleman from the local newspaper. We won't even mention his name. And the editorial was, was written well. It had great sentence structure. Grammar was good. He had his point, he had his obligatory call to attention with the Cousin Vinny movie, one of my favorite movies. You've all seen that movie, right? I know you have, Donna. Everybody's seen Cousin Vinny. And he used that at the beginning to catch our attention. And then he went on and on and that was the end of the good part. There was nothing else in it that was, it was not only devious, it was untrue. It wasn't, it was partially factual. Like I say, he mentioned things in there that, that are not true. We are not committed to do these things. Maybe we should have. Whatever, that was his opinion. The gentleman has not been here, I don't know how long. He's brand new to the area. I'm sure he's a gentleman, I just call him that. And I, and I know he knows how to write. But what he's writing about, he doesn't have the history. He doesn't know. We just heard history here from everyone that's here about how this, how the school system has been and how it's grown and how that railroad train has taken off and that train's climbing a hill and it's been climbing the hill for a long time. I didn't appreciate the article. I didn't appreciate him actually signaling you out, Mr. Ingersoll, because you took the hit from me. I'm the guy that jumped the gun, not you. I told you I was going to be nice to you.
Mr. Kelly, I didn't read the newspaper at all.
You didn't read it? Okay, good. You know what?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Well, for the people that did.
I, I think 90% of these people are working people that don't read the newspaper either.
Well, I'm going to go on the thing anyways with it because I did read the newspaper. And, and old school and we all, during the old days, we used to have a thing called the newspaper. I will get to my point. What I'm, I'm saying is I want to talk to the three of you because Mrs. Richardson and I were not here seven years ago when the school system was down here at a low point. You folks were. And you were the ones that took the school system. You're the ones that hired Mr. Gent. You were the ones that made everything what it is today by your leadership. And am I giving you all a compliment? You bet your life I am. Is it because I want you to vote my way tonight? Yeah, probably. That Cousin Vinny would say, yeah, you betcha, you know, I want you to vote my way. The big thing about school and everything that we do here, and I'm not an educator like you guys. I don't have my PhD or my MBAs. My wife's a teacher, my daughter's a teacher. I know what it's about. I grew up in the system. I grew up in the Boys and Girls Club, Boy Scouts every way in the community. One thing I remember in my motto was be prepared. Now, that's what we do here, isn't it? Isn't what we do with the teaching is to prepare the children for life in every way? And as Mrs. Mills has said, what you do, Dr. Mills, is you want it to be prepared in every way, completely, in every facet to prepare them. And that's what you, you folks did. You made the school district prepared for seven years later. And it's obvious that we have someone to fulfill that time. We're in the middle of COVID. We don't have time to fool around with things. And I don't mean fool around, those are the wrong words. We don't have time to spend on it. We got to get rid of the COVID. The things that John talked about, Dr. Prince talked about are the right things, sir. You have the right priorities and we have to get through those things. Did I jump the gun? Yep, I did jump the gun. But they might have been a little bit of a process. We don't have to do that. But with that, the experience counts. It always counts. The experience to be there, to go through everything that we've gone through, to know what the district needs. We have a fabulous staff. And I want to tell you, I've been through it before through the process. We've had a city manager for 20 years. We had, we had a process. We went off, when I was on the console, we lost a great candidate because of one person saying one thing wrong. I don't want to lose Mr. Prince. I don't want to lose him. Okay, he is the obvious choice for me. And if anyone jumped the gun, it was me. We could have had a process. We could have had what we did tonight. So it was a good thing, Mrs. Holly, and for you folks to do that. And I said I'd jump on board with it. But if anybody jumped the gun, it was me. I don't agree with the article. It was devious. We have the control to hire who we want. We have the obvious choice and I hope, I hope we can get it done tonight. And at the end of the movie, by the way, in Cousin Vinny, who was the hero? It was Marisa Tomei, wasn't she? Wasn't his girlfriend? She had the experience. She grew up with her dad who was a mechanic and was into the cars. And she was the one in court who gave the expert testimony to save the movie, wasn't she?
Fifty percent, 50% of the people here didn't even watch Cousin Vinny either.
They don't want to hear about it? No, no? You know who Marisa Tomei is. She went out with George Costanza. Folks, it is obvious what we have to do here tonight. So just, just go along with it and maybe you don't read the paper. Maybe you shouldn't, maybe Troy's right.
Ms. Holly or Mr. Ingersoll, you want to make any comments before we?
I was going to see what everybody else had to say. I don't mind making comments.
I could say something.
Okay, go ahead.
What do you think about yours?
I'm still writing, thank you.
The first thing I want to say is that I have been here the entire time that Dr. Prince and Mr. Gent, I was here before that, came in on 2010. So I was part of that. In fact, I actually was the chairman of the board, I've learned. I had forgotten that, but someone brought that up to me the last, at that time when you guys came. And the one, the first thing I want to say is we have no idea, the majority of us here today, what this man is capable of doing. But if we really listen to what's going on, this man along with the cabin of administrators and Mr. Gent, but this man has his eye on data. And he's, 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 I call him a genius when it comes to data, okay? We have brought this district up, as has already been said, from a very low C, a lot of failing schools. I mean, we, sometimes as people, we forget, we forget what it was like. But I very much remember how they made this change. And I definitely do not want to go backwards, especially when I see that there is someone that is capable to do the job. And not just with data, but he's, he's a people person. Seven years myself, and I don't know, you know, for those that have to work up under, it might be a different story. But he has known how to treat this board and has anything I've asked Dr. Prince to do. Any outside community work, he has been there so quick and make your eyes, you know, bat. So I know myself that he is perfect to carry us on from where we're at as a school board. I get that. My concern is also the concern of many in the community in that I, I, I wanted us to have a more open interview with other candidates. I mean, we have a great, as a district, we have a lot of qualified people now that can take the reign. I just don't think, I think he's the best man for the reign. But I would have liked to have seen an interview process where we in, internally, not outwardly, because a lot is going on. As Mr. Kelly said, we're going through a lot right now. We, as a district, we need to stay focused on our children's achievement, our children's safety, this COVID situation, and our budget. I don't want to spend thousands and thousands and thousands, at least $25,000 to $75,000 doing an external, so I'm not for external search. But I do, and I don't think it would, even now at this point in time, I feel as if it really would. really wouldn't matter because it's already been made known strongly from all of us of who we believe is the best person for the position. But just giving people the opportunity, you know, we just might be wrong. There might just might be somebody else that might come through that we, you know, we don't, I don't like shutting the door completely on those who would want to apply. I don't think we would have too many people applying. But I like the idea of having that opportunity to allow others to apply. After having said that, I am, I am going to go with whatever the board decides to do as a whole. That's what I'm going to do. And I know that we cannot go wrong with Dr. Prince, but we are going to put his feet to the fire. And he knows that. And he has high expectations. And he knows that we have high expectations. And so we are going to continue to work earnestly with whoever becomes our next superintendent. And remember, community, we give one-year contracts. If that contract is not up to par, when we don't feel like he's meeting that contract, we can always decide to get a different superintendent. And I'm just going to leave it at that. But I'm for whatever the majority of the board is for. I'm going to go with that because I do know that, I know what I have, what we have here and Dr. Prince as well.
You ready to talk?
First off, I want to thank everyone for coming out and sharing their viewpoints. And I just wish I did read the newspaper. Sounds like it was pretty interesting to me. I don't want to read it.
You didn't want to read it, no?
But anyways, I do need to field a couple of questions that were asked to me this week. And I just want to state my views publicly. Why so quickly? I think I stated it pretty well last time. I thought it was important to hear the viewpoints of the community, just like some of the other board members, just to make sure that we felt comfortable. It's great seeing the community leaders come out, principals and everybody else come out and support Dr. Prince. But the reason why it was quickly and why the process that I felt comfortable in was number one is there's a season to education. And you start looking at a district level position as such. April, March and April, your district leaders, your HR director, your executive directors, if they don't know who your captain is, they're going to find their captain. They're going to, they're going to look elsewhere if they're not, because what happens is, is when your captain of the ship comes in, he's going to bring in his own team. You start looking at other organizations and that's what happens. The problem with other organizations is the captain doesn't last that long. You say, well, what are you talking about? Well, look at Indian River. In the seven years that Mr. Gent's been here, how many superintendents have they had? You look at Palm Beach County, how many superintendents have they had? If you don't know, Google it. The key to St. Lucie County's success has been in longevity. Dr. Vogel, Mr. Lannan. In between there, we had Mrs. Yost because she was an ARAM, Mr. Gent. We've had stability and we've also had opportunity to grow. Each superintendent brought their own gifts and their own way of administrating to us to gain student achievement. We are now in the position to go ahead and continue that growth. I look at my other city leaders. I look at the city of Fort Pierce. Where did that gentleman come from, Mr. Memes? I look at the fire district. So I look within my own community and the same organizations are doing the same exact thing. We're trying to grow within ourselves. Do we need outside appearances and outside looks? Yes, we do. But when I start looking in at the cabinet, I look at a man from Orange County, I look at two from West Palm Beach, I look at gentlemen that we brought in with different expertise outside of St. Lucie County to come in here to help change us and to bring the data that we need and data structure. So I felt like through the relationships that we've had with Superintendent Gent, he brought in the team that was capable of that. So yes, we have brought people in. So when we talk about costs too, we're not talking about $25,000 or $80,000. I mean, I wasn't really concerned about the money there. Yes, it's taxpayer money, but on a $526 million budget, hmm, I don't think that's much. The cost is when you buy out a superintendent. That's where your cost is. And I'm sorry I didn't relate that to the community, but your buyout is very expensive. And then it's very extensive to keep on bringing in people to fill in those positions. So that was where I was going from, from a financial aspect. I had a couple of other thoughts. Basically, Dr. Prince came in with Mr. Gent and raised the bar. And I feel very comfortable, not with just student achievement, but how he's ingrained himself in his community, how his family got involved, not only just in the schools, but in the church and some other areas of this community. So Dr. Prince isn't an outsider. He is part of us. He's part of St. Lucie County Public Schools. And I feel very comfortable in making a nomination for him tonight. That is not a motion, Jack. I still would like to hear everybody else speak.
Well, I don't know. You were reading your phone, so I didn't know what you were doing.
No, no, I said I feel very comfortable in making a motion, but I have not made a motion.
Ms. Richardson or Ms. Hawley, do you have any thoughts concerning this?
Yes, yeah, I do have some thoughts. First of all, I have to, again, thank everybody for coming out. It's late and, you know, so thank you for caring enough about your community to be here. I'm going to have to say that really this, Dr. Prince is, he's an awesome person. I agree with everybody about his, you know, the things, his character, I mean, who he is, his personality. You know, he welcomed me here when I came here. When I go in my office, there is always chocolate on my desk. And when I see the chocolate, I know who it's from. It's from Dr. Prince. He's the only person that puts chocolate on my desk. He welcomes me. He is open. When I ask him a question, I get an answer. When I tell him I don't want a fluff answer, I want an answer, he gives me an answer. So, you know, we have, we can communicate. I don't feel like, you know, I, whatever he says, you know, I can, I take it. I understand. Sometimes he makes it very simple for me to understand sometimes when it becomes, I say, highfalutin. And for that, you know, I thank Dr. Prince. However, after hearing of Mr. Gent's retirement, I had to do some research. I had to consult with our community as to what is best for a school district. And I will agree with the board that this is not necessarily, my objections are not about, and that's why I said what I said about Dr. Prince. It's not about Dr. Prince. It's never about Dr. Prince. I hear what you're saying. I agree with what you're saying about Dr. Prince. It's not about Dr. Prince. I have thought long and hard. And this is my concern. I am dissatisfied with the way the hiring process has gone. So I have to agree with Dr. Mills about the process. We have not involved the community in developing a profile for what our community expects from our superintendent and our school district. Additionally, we have not had public interview to discuss what are the qualities the board is seeking in the new superintendent, in addition to a timeline for goals and objectives for the district. I had no preconceived ideas about who to hire for superintendent. And if our final choice was an internal candidate, I believe it would have been a better decision after going through a vetting process. We would have been stronger as a board and superintendent leadership team in our community eyes if we had conducted a more inclusive and open hiring process. It's about transparency. You know, it's not that Dr. Prince is probably not the better person for the job. One of our speakers said today that the cream will rise to the top. So no matter what we did or what the process was, the cream, if Dr. Prince is the cream, he would rise to the top. So, but it's about transparency. It's about doing our due diligence. It's about for me doing the right thing. Just have an open, so there's nothing to be afraid of. There's nothing to jump the gun at. There is nothing, you know, just let it be open, let it be transparent. The cream will rise to the top. In addition, our community is growing and diversifying. And this process does not and did not allow for any minority candidates to come forward to tell us what they can do for a school district, which impacts our community. After all, this year, this month, we are celebrating Black History Month, aren't we? No one got the chance to be considered. The cream will rise to the top. Keeping in mind that we just enacted the District Diversity Project in June of 2021. You know, the cream will rise. So that is my objection. It's about the process, not about the man. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, Ms. Hawley.
I too want to say thank you to everyone for coming tonight. It is affirming to see so many people turn out, whether they be employees of the district or community, members of our faith community, our government communities. It's encouraging to see all of you turn out and be here tonight, whether you expressed a view or not, just your participation here tonight says a lot to us. I was keeping kind of a tally as we went along. And of the 15 speakers, nine of them spoke in support and six, in essence, spoke in support of Dr. Prince, but not in support of the process. And I will say and acknowledge that I had multiple calls today about that very subject, about our process. My concern was, number one, why did we wait till today when we've had a month or so to get in touch with us? And it was, it was from dawn till we came in here today that I was getting calls and texts, expressing concern with the process. So I hear that. I also acknowledge, you know, that this is our second forum that we've had in reference to possible superintendent being named to succeed Mr. Gent. And I've heard overwhelmingly the support for Dr. Prince in these forums. I'm reminded that when we hired Mr. Gent, part of what we charged him with was creating a succession plan. We had been through multiple searches, just on my time on the board, there were multiple And we went through the whole process, had people come in. That search, the final search that we had in 2015, I have to say, was the most successful search for St. Lucie Public Schools when we hired Mr. Gent. He brought a wealth of information, a wealth of history, plus this was home to him, which made it all the more exciting for our community to see a local one return and become superintendent here. But as I started to say, part of what we charged him with was creating a succession plan. Because we had been through so many searches and the process so many times, we became well aware that growing from within makes way more sense than hiring from without. We interviewed and interviewed and interviewed. And someone that's not familiar with the culture of a district, with the rules, the policies, the statutes of the state even, makes the learning curve extremely, extremely large. So without saying it to my fellow board members, I really watched the cabinet that Mr. Gent put together. I was very appreciative of the way he integrated principals on a rotating basis so that there was always a fresh voice on your cabinet, someone that brought the perspective of a school to the table. I've watched the people that he has hired and I've watched the longevity of those people. And that's a huge statement, especially in this day and age. It must mean, my interpretation, is that the staff believe in Mr. Gent, believe in the direction that he has taken this district and wanted to be part of that and stay part of that. I will admit that when Mr. Gent announced his retirement, that was the last thing I wanted to hear because I really, I'm so proud for our kids because they're having the opportunity to be successful in their academic careers, wherever that may lead them. But it had to put my mind in overdrive then about what does this mean? And it occurred to me again, Debbie, you got to remember, you all asked Mr. Gent to create a succession plan. We trusted him with everything else and he's been successful. So why would this be any different? And we've watched and we've heard from so many of you. And I can tell you from a statewide perspective, I spent last week in Tallahassee advocating for our district, for our children, for our teachers. And one of the appropriations bills that is in Tallahassee right now is about growing our own teachers to have the funding to promote those programs. Well, that's exactly what we've done, or Mr. Gent has done as superintendent. He has nurtured and brought along not just Dr. Prince, but multiple others as well. In my eyes, to say that the legacy Mr. Gent has built and brought to us and that we've all enjoyed and want to continue enjoying would be a step backwards. Do I believe that there are other folks? Yes. But to continue the culture, to continue the upward rise that this district has been on for the past seven years, to me, makes the most sense for our children. And our children are ultimately what we're sitting up here to take care of. I too admit the process, looking back, could have been different. Do I think we would have had a different result? Probably not. I can say for me, I got so involved in keeping the trajectory going up that maybe the process did become a little too rapid. But I also believe, as Mr. Ingersoll said, that our folks need to know who's going to be in charge, who's going to steer the ship. And that creates a sense of peace in a time that could bring a lot of angst and turmoil. All of those reasons together caused me to lend my support to Dr. Prince. I have been watching him the whole time he's been here. I have been watching him the whole time he's been here. It doesn't hurt that he's a Florida Gator. But I've had the opportunity to watch a lot of our folks and interact with them, and the feedback I get is very positive. They're appreciative of the skill set that he brings. And we wouldn't have the success that we've had had it not been for the team that's in place right now. So that was a very long-winded way for me to say that my primary concern has been and will always be, what is the best course for our students? What course will ensure their success? And we are on that course, and I don't want to regress. So again, could we have done it a little differently? Probably so. But honestly, there's not a process to follow. There's been procedures that we've done, but there's not a process in place to look for a new superintendent. But what I have discovered in the state of Florida now especially, is this promoting from within when it's the right person. And I believe we have the right person. Thank you for your time and for hearing me out.
Any further discussion? Are we going to?
Very quickly, Dr. Mills, we heard about processes and transparency. Processes and transparency are two very different things. Maybe we needed a process, but we didn't have to have one, maybe we needed it, maybe that's where we might have failed here. But as far as transparency, in that article, I'm going back again, that maybe not a lot of people read, in that article, when they picked on Mr. Ingersoll, they also said, he said that, and I know Mr. Jen read it, he said something about that the way we did things, it almost was like a sham. That's the word that got me upset. You know what? You know what would have been a sham? If Mr. Ingersoll said he's 90% sure of what he wants to do, I was 100% sure, and we had other people leaning that way. If we had went out, if we had out for a national search or any kind of search, okay? That would have been a sham because we had our minds made up. So we were transparent about it, and I mean it. That was, I've seen searches with very, very low transparency, because I know how they were gonna turn out, but people didn't give you their transparent view. So we were very transparent, believe me. Maybe too, I don't know. I don't think you ever can be. And one other thing, Mr. Jen always said, Mrs. Richardson, and I remember we talked about this, what is the largest room in the world, Mr. Jen? Room for improvement. So Dr. Prince, remember that? Because I think Mrs. Richardson's gonna be looking for that, and so are all of we. But the transparency was here. And Troy, what are you gonna do, Troy?
I know the process wasn't perfect, but I'm going to make a motion to continue contracts with, continue conversations with Dr. Prince as the next superintendent, starting July 1st, 2022, and have the attorney enter contracts and negotiation with him. That's my motion.
Mr. Ingersoll has made his motion.
I will second that motion.
Ms. Hawley has made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One opposed. Motion carries for one.
Prince, I don't want to hear anything about Danny DeVito, Cousin Vinny.
I promise I won't. I'm humbled. I really am by the belief in me, by the board. Selfishly, I'm gonna say I think it's the right decision. And the one dissenting decision, I think I understand why, Mrs. Richardson, and I understand. And I'm gonna do my best to make you feel like that that was the wrong vote every day moving forward. Because I want you, I do want you to have high expectations from me, and I want you to have high expectations from the entire team. I want to tell you something, I got into this business not to make money. We don't become teachers to get a honey bun. We become teachers to make a difference. And I think all I ever wanted to do when I came to St. Lucie County was just be part of a team, to just feel like I was doing good. And there's nothing I've ever accomplished without the principals, the teachers, the food service workers, the custodians, the bus drivers, our union partners, and the people in cabinet. Because they've become my friends, and they've become my biggest supporters. And I know you win with people, and not just people, but you win with the right people. I think what you just said was that things are moving in the right direction, and we want to make sure we have continuity, and we've got people in the right seats on the bus. And I can tell you, I want to take our district to greater heights. I also said this to a few of you privately. We had one legend retire last week, the GOAT, Tom Brady. Mr. Jen, you are my GOAT, and you are walking out the door June 30th. And I cannot be, I cannot be Mr. Jen. Nobody can be Mr. Jen. You know, just, it's impossible. But I can be the best version of myself every day. And I will promise you, my commitment is to make sure that every decision that we make as a system is about children, and it's about the kids. I appreciate this opportunity, and I promise to the board members that have made your decision tonight, I will not let you down. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your, taking out the busyness of your time, being here, voicing your opinions, and just, I hope to see, now, this is me, I would love to see y'all here every meeting, every meeting. That's me, okay? I would love to see you do that because what that would say, I know, I'm saying it's me. What that would do for me is let me know that my community cares enough about our children that they're willing to come to the meeting. We are adjourned.